You guys ready on this side?
Ready.
Call of Shakopee City Council meeting, December 2nd, 2025 to order. If you could please take the roll.
Councilmember Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Lehman?
Here.
Item number three, if you want to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Fire Department of the United States of America, and to your Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counsel?
No.
Wish counsel, Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Second by Counselor Contreras. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number five is consent agenda. Any changes to our consent agenda?
Not from staff, sir.
Counsel? Mr. Lara?
Just going to pull 5C.
Any other changes from counsel? Wishes of counsel? Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Is there a second? Counselor Contreras makes a second. Mr. Reynolds, would you please read the consent?
Yes, sir. Members of counsel, these are the consent items for Tuesday, December 2nd of 2025. 5A purchases of four skid steer loaders for Public Works and the purchase of a pickup truck for the fire department. 5B is our concessions operation policy. 5D is the Sand Venture Large Yellow Slide Refinishing Project. 5E is a remodel of the community center sauna. 5F is a purchase of Copman Playground Equipment at the end of the year discount. 5G approves the easement acquisition for the Boiling Springs Drainage Improvements. 5H is approval of the November 28th, excuse me, November 18th, 2025 city council minutes. 5I is the premier sponsorship by Metropolitan Dance Alliance. 5J is the event sponsorship by Loffler Construction Company. 5K is an event sponsorship by Kraus Anderson. 5L is an event sponsorship by Lionside. By the way, thanks to all of those organizations for their generous donations. 5M approves tobacco business license renewals for 2026. 5N approves pawnbroker business license renewals for 2026. 5O approves the taxicab business license renewals for 2026. And 5P is the purchase of land in the West End for the open space to protect the bluff.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion on the motion from counsel? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Item number six, public comment. If you're here for an item not on the agenda, now would be the time to step forward and speak to counsel. If you're here for an item not on the agenda and you want to address the city council, please come on up to the table there. Name an address for the record. Might have to pull that microphone closer to your mouth.
Okay.
The bass is heavy, it will move. There you go.
Okay. Jeff Bolt, 1401 here in court. I was told that there'd be a topic on the consent agenda for a proposed connection between Marshall Lane and Timber Trails and Wyndham Acres. And it wasn't on the agenda, and I'm just curious if there's any knowledge of that with this group here, that the county was going to request consent from you folks to remove it from the agenda, or from the proposed road changes on 17.
Have you contacted city staff?
Tony, the county engineer, had called me and told me and was also emailed that it would be on this agenda today. That's why we're here today.
Okay.
Well, the county engineer doesn't control the agenda. I would suggest that you contact the county engineer and ask him what he's talking about.
I will do that.
Thank you.
I just thought I'd ask once I was here in case you knew. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Your bet.
If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the city council on an item that is not on our agenda, now would be the time to do so. Last call. All right. Item number seven, business removed from consent agenda. 5C was removed by Counselor Lara. Mr. Lara?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to review this real quick, just putting it on the record that the proposed policy is not going to hinder on any organizations that we work with in their sponsorship efforts, in their events. All the questions from counsel have been answered satisfactory. Administrator Reynolds would like to make any comments regarding that, but as far as we're concerned with the questions that we received about it, the answers were satisfactory.
Yeah, and I will, I sent an email out to counsel earlier. I'll make that part of the record. I've already talked to the city clerk. That way, if there's any questions in the future, it's easily traced back. And then any concepts or things that are unclear, obviously, we can use that to clarify it, and it shouldn't be an issue in the future.
Correct. And then any questions, you know, always they can reach out to city staff. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt temporary advertising and sponsorship signage policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whiting. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 8A is a public hearing. 2026 budget and property tax levy and presentation. Motion to open a public hearing. Counselor Contreras?
A motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Delaney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. Councilmembers, tonight we have a public hearing on the 2026 proposed budget and property tax levy. Sorry, it took me a second. The computer actually popped up the window that says, "Do you want to restart now and do an update?" So it kind of threw me out there for a second. Anyways, the city annually adopts a budget and property tax levy for the upcoming year. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide the public with information on the city's 2026 proposed budget and 2026 proposed property tax levy, and allows the public a chance to comment on the proposed budget prior to it being adopted. I did put a pie chart here on the slide. It's the breakdown of property taxes based on the preliminary levies for someone who lives here in Shakopee. The portion we're discussing tonight is the city levy, which represents 27.7% of the property taxes paid, so it's only about a quarter of the property tax bill that funds city operations. We don't have any influence or control over the school or Scott County. And similarly to assess values, those will be determined by the county assessor's office. Again, the city has no influence on assessed values as well. So generally speaking, our budget objectives remain unchanged from the past few years, which include continuing to be one of the lowest tax communities here in the metro and continue to grow our tax capacity of existing and new property. We'll continue to be transparent and make decisions with the long-term best financial interest in mind and provide quality services at a reasonable price. As we go through the budget process, we continue to update our website, our budget page on our website with new information, try to be transparent with all of our information. Our tax receipt tool is still on the website. For those who haven't checked that out, we encourage you to do so. Basically provides a customized breakdown of how property taxes are spent here in Shakopee. When you hear the word budget, you usually think numbers and dollars, but the budget is really setting the service level of the city and what we want to provide in terms of public safety response times, how many potholes should we fill, how clean and well-maintained do we want our parks and open spaces. Providing high-quality city services is the foundation of a healthy and growing community, as depicted here on the slide. Those high-quality services drive population growth as more people and businesses want to be part of the community. Population growth then drives real estate values of both existing and new inventory. That growth in real estate values ensures rising tax revenues, which pays for, again, inflation costs of the high-quality services. The cycle is the foundation of our annual budget development and helps identify and explain many of these influencing factors. Our role in the cycle is to ensure we're providing those high-quality city services, influencing the mix between industrial, residential, and commercial property types, and then determining the appropriate balance between property taxes, user fees, and grants. Budget process, so several steps it took to get us up to this point, including meetings on the city's long-term financial plan, capital improvement plan, and budget. The city also hosted a budget listening session back on June 17th, prior to the beginning of the budget process. And then the preliminary levy was adopted on September 16th per state statute. This would be the maximum amount we consider property tax levy, so it can't be increased from that September 16th meeting. From a staff perspective, we're really happy with how this budget came together and what it accomplishes. We've seen a 5% growth in taxable market value. 58% of that growth is coming from new construction, which has limited the impact on existing property owners. Based on the county assessment numbers for 2026, the tax rate will see very little change from what it is today, and today we're one of the lowest tax communities in the metro, with ours being the fourth lowest out of 32 cities with the population between 25,000 and 100,000. The budget also includes a $300,000 increase in the capital improvement levy, which would pay for existing street overlay and reconstruction needs. As I mentioned on that previous slide, this basically shows the metro cities of 25,000 to 100,000, and again, Shakopee being the fourth lowest in that comparison. The Department of Revenue website has a listing of all preliminary tax levies statewide. This slide shows comparable in surrounding cities to provide kind of an idea of what we're seeing. Some of our comparison cities do. We'll be one of the few cities in the metro proposing an under-6% levy increase. The statewide average is 8.7%. Golden Valley being the one that is slightly under than us, but you'll see on a future slide they were at the highest out of our comparisons. And I do get a chance to talk to many of these cities on a frequent basis, and what's driving these larger increases are pretty consistent across the cities. Their new city buildings, street improvements, equipment costs, and then police and fire staffing, so we're not alone with some of those factors driving our budget. The proposed 2026 city levy is $28,214,048. Probably would have been a lot easier if I had just rounded those numbers, but that's what it ended up being. In total, we're at a $1.47 million increase, or a 5.5% increase from last year. This increase includes about $1.2 million for general fund operations and the $300,000 capital improvement levy increase. The city did set aside about $350,000 of general fund balance at the start of the year to be used towards the debt service levy, so that's why there's no change in that as well. And then we've also included a $50,000 increase in that EDA levy. Here's the summary of the 2026 proposed general fund budget. The budget incorporates the general fund portion of the property tax levy and then many of the items that were impacted, I'll show on the next few slides. Our largest portion of the budget continues to be public safety, which includes police, fire, and building inspection. Here's the summary of the changes impacting the 2026 preliminary levy. This is in comparison to the levy, the 2025 property tax levy. The amounts shown in red parentheses represent a decrease in the property tax levy, so in this example, red means good. Example here would be fee revenue increases would result in less property tax needed to fund those services. Through additional revenues and transfers, we're able to offset about $2.1 million of the expenses that were increased. And then overall, the city is anticipating a net increase in non-property tax revenues of $2.1 million. Won't cover all the items on the slide, but wanted to touch on the most significant. So several organizations will contract with Shakopee Police Department to provide services throughout the year. With the addition of the amphitheater, we've increased that amount by $616,500. That revenue will be offset from staffing overtime costs, as well as contracting with other agencies to fill those requirements. The city has historically been conservative when forecasting building permit revenue. The 2026 forecast does include a $450,000 increase in building permit revenue. In total, we're budgeting about $3.9 million in building permit-related revenues for 2026. And then the community center revenue, those have been increased to reflect the proposed fee increases for 2026, which is also reflected of the revenue policy that city council reviewed earlier this year. Even with those fee adjustments, the community center will be, will continue to be one of the most affordable community center options. And the city is also proposing to add a health inspector to ensure safety and cleanliness of the 12 hotels and 72 restaurants within the city. New licenses and inspection fees are budgeted to help offset those costs. We have, for transfers, so these would be transfers to the general fund to help pay for general fund operating costs. For example, use of the remaining overtime, or use of the remaining public safety aid that we had received in 2023, so we're utilizing the remaining balance of that. Use of self-insurance fund balance, which we had initially set aside to potentially go to a self-insuring fund option. We're now looking at a different direction, so utilizing that fund balance and transferring that into the general fund. And then a new transfer beginning in 2026, which we've talked a lot about at this level, is a transfer from the EDA to help pay, or at least basically provide support for general fund operations that they would use within their EDA fund, which would include city council, finance, administration, technology, communications, and HR. So from a financial standpoint, just better reflect in that full cost of the EDA. Moving on to expenditure changes, like most other cities, operational costs are primarily driven by personnel, which represent about 63% of the increase in expenditures. I'll touch on most of the items on the slide, and then I have a separate slide to talk about the third one there, third one down on the list. Wages and benefits come for 70% of the city's general fund costs. City does have three unions, patrol, sergeants, and public works. All three of those union contracts covered a three-year period from '24 to 2026. Those contracts included a 3% cost of living adjustment for patrol and sergeants and a 3.5% for public works. For non-union employees, we're matching that 3% for the first two unions. Across all the employee groups, the cost of living adjustment amounts to approximately $792,000. City maintains pay plans for all employees that include step increases. We've budgeted $388,000 for those step increases. 2026 budget also includes 8.3% increase for health insurance premiums. Some of this ends up amounting to about $99,000 in total. Some of that would have increased more, but because of planning election changes, so we had a number of employees switch from family to single or from low to high deductible plans, which have also helped kind of offset some of that increase. That 8.3% is actually reasonable. If you look at the past couple of years, we were actually, last year 16.7, the year before 20.9. So the 8.3% in comparison to that isn't as bad. And then new items impacting the 2026 budget would include that building health inspector, which is a new position. That position, again, will be offset by restaurant and hotel licenses and inspection revenues. Minnesota paid leave program, which is a state-mandated program. City is actually using a third-party insurance provider to implement that program. The new leave program basically offers job-protected paid time for eligible employees, up to 20 weeks per year, to care for themselves or family members due to medical reasons, family needs, and safety concerns. That, the cost of that program would be split at a 0.375% between the employer and the employee. The city clerk, or, excuse me, the clerk administrative assistant, we're proposing to move from part-time to full-time, which would provide consistent front desk support and allow those that have been backfilling that to concentrate on their duties. The part-time marketing specialist, this would be a shared position between recreation and communications, and it'll allow support for communication programs, as well as recreation events and facilities. And then some positive news, city holds workers' compensation insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities Trust. Between '22 and '24, we've seen those rates go up rather dramatically. Past year, we've actually seen those rates come down, and they're expected to go down even further for 2026, so we've actually reduced that amount by $295,000. So the one item I didn't cover on there, city recently completed a market compensation study for all non-union employees. The goal of that study was to be at the midpoint of all our comparable cities, which would be Maplewood, Coon Rapids, Lakeville, Roseville, Blaine, St. Louis, Park, Golden Valley, Inver Grove Heights, Burnsville, and Savage. The city council has provided guidance they want to be at that midpoint for first alley ranges in comparison to those comparable cities. The study showed that our pay plan was behind market averages and included several positions that were significantly below that average. So as a result, the following modifications are proposed, the non-union plan, which would be a 1% market adjustment, the proposed creation of an additional 2% step, basically a final step after each grade, and then the elimination of the step-one grade for a few of the, or the step-one of a few of the grades to help keep all the, or basically keep it in line with the other grades within the pay plan with the number of steps. And then positions that were 6% or more below market, we've adjusted up to a newly formed, created half-grade between the two grades. This would be inserted between current grade and the next higher grade, which would impact about 18 positions. So these pay plan adjustments, we believe, will allow the city to remain competitive, realign its positions with the market average, and then also still keep our current pay plan structure and maintain internal equity. That total impact of those changes were about $320,000. And here's just kind of a pre, here's where we're at currently compared to where it would be with the new pay plan. As you can see, the blue line is the current one, and the green one's proposed, and is bringing us closer to that midpoint range. So that was the goal of the whole study. So during the budget process, we typically will identify any items greater than $10,000. That's kind of the initial step, and then do a forecast for some of the items like utilities and fuel, just to make sure that across departments, we're handling it the same way. So that was kind of the first step in the process, and here's kind of the, kind of those items that were greater than $10,000. Public safety contracted costs and engineering contracted construction inspections are pass-throughs, so the city collects contracted fees for both of those services, and then engineering fees also pay for those costs. The contingency, we've increased for remaining unknowns, which include potential impacts from the fire department, as they also have provided notice that it would be forming a union. The fire department also requests additional funding to provide for turnout gear, additional medical equipment, uniforms, and additional training, and increase in our prosecution services contract with the county. And then the community center is proposing an increase to allow their cleaning contract to go from two days to seven days, which would allow their staff to focus on more preventative maintenance needs. The city has the internal service funds, which accumulate funds for the purchase of, purchase and replacement of large city equipment and facilities. The funding sources are annual rents, which are basically internal service charges to the various departments. The equipment rent will increase both as a result of new equipment being added to the schedule, as well as year-over-year just cost of vehicles and equipment increasing. We do have a 20-year equipment replacement schedule that includes every piece of equipment the city owns, included with our CIP plan. And then building rents, we set those with the intention of not necessarily being able to fully replace buildings, but to be able to pay for the major maintenance projects, like the roofs, the boilers. The rent increase is both a result there as projects related to the aging of a city building, as well as inflationary costs for those projects. So general fund typically, the swings up and down are typically moderated through those internal rent charges. However, we do have some one-time items that pop up every budget cycle, so these aren't expected to necessarily reoccur in future budgets, with the exception here of the comprehensive plan, which is a two-year, will fall over a two-year span. So this cost for the cop plan would be offset by a one-time reduction in salt inventory, built up by the recent mild winters. We've, we have enough inventory, we believe, to not buy as much salt as we typically would. And then that we're also removing the previous one-time items that were in the 2025 budget. As mentioned kind of earlier, we are proposing a $300,000 increase in the capital improvement levy that would go for the cost of maintaining basically overlays and reconstruction projects of our existing streets. The costs of our street projects have pretty much doubled from the five-year CIP leading up to today to the five-year CIP looking forward. So this would be a way to kind of bridge some of that gap with a kind of, you know, there's been a little bit of a funding shortfall between what we get for the CIF levy and franchise fees compared to what we're actually paying for some of these street projects. What we've done in the past, typically, we've used our, any balance we'd have available at the end of the year to help pay for some of these costs. We've also hedged about in 2022, we continue to look at those options as well, but this would help make, I guess, help that gap not grow any further or maintain it. So the city's taxable market value is at $8.7 billion, which is an increase of $412 million, or 5% from last year. Residential, apartment, commercial, all saw growth in market value. And then again, new construction amounted to about 57.8% of her taxable market value increase. On this slide here, just to touch on residential properties, overall, the average home value of existing homes in Shakopee increased 2.1%. As you can see from this chart, 93% of residential homes saw very little change in their values, plus or minus 5%. We do have 950 homes that saw their values rise by greater than 5%. I do get these numbers from Scott County. I did look back at this slide from last year, and if you're curious, there's 197 more residential properties than there were at this time on the slide lesser. The gross tax capacity of the city, which is how, what we use to calculate that taxes, it gets adjusted for the fiscal disparities program, which is unique to the seven-county metro area in Minnesota. 40% of commercial industrial growth since 1971 gets contributed to the pool, and internally we receive a distribution based on population and market value of all property per person compared to the average market value per person in the metro area. We are one of the largest net contributors to this program. The 2026 data shows we're fourth out of 179 communities. This chart shows Shakopee's fiscal disparities in terms of tax capacity. Basically, with our growing commercial industrial base, it's gone from $2.2 million in 2017 to $11.7 million in 2026. So put that in context in terms of what percentage of tax capacity is going, is being contributed, net contributed. It's about 10.2% of the value in Shakopee is going into that program.
And if I may, it should be noted that this particular program doesn't exist anywhere else in the United States, except for the county metro area. And unfortunately, that's obviously a lot of tax capacity that we could be using for far greater things in our community, and it's unfortunate that there are more takers than our givers in this particular program. And I've been fighting, as you know, for almost nine of the 10 years I've been here to try to somehow affect this particular program, but unfortunately, it's a political decision at this point, and with Minneapolis now switching over to being no longer a contributor, but a recipient of these funds, that made a big difference, and I don't see this particular program going away in the near future, unfortunately.
And I'll just add one thing too. When we get state dollars to help build commercial industrial projects to create jobs, they turn around and punish you for doing that. So they are kind of speaking both sides here, and just puts you a little bit at ease, Mr. Reynolds. It's been a little longer than nine that I've been battling this animal, and we'll just keep on fighting it because it just doesn't make any sense.
Yep.
Continue.
So the city levy is a flat dollar for taxes, which is spread against all taxable properties in proportion to the percentage of tax capacity of the city. Residential represents 45.7% of the city's tax capacity. This in comparison to the chart last year shows that it's slightly more than the total from the previous from the previous year. So this chart is percentages, but if you want to think of it in dollar terms, it works out approximately the same way. So for every dollar the city requests in the property tax levy, residential properties are paying about 45.7% or 45.7 cents of every dollar. And the slide shows the tax rates over the past 10 years, oops, sorry about that, including the 2026 estimate based on the previous slide, but based on the preliminary assessment value as it stands today, slight increase in the city's tax rate to 28.67% from last The chart, this chart provides the information on the median value home and city property taxes paid since 2021. Orange bar amounts on the left axis represent the median value home, where the gray shaded portion is the property tax paid on that median value home. So median value being if you lined up all cities from lowest value to highest value, it's the one in the middle, the exact middle. The value of the median value home has increased from $350,700 to $361,500 over the past year, which is a $10,600 increase. For the median value home, this equates to $63 or 6.8% in property taxes. Again, it's also taken in consideration, the value change. Absent any change in value, that median value home would see a tax increase of about 30 bucks or 3.2%. This, this slide shows just a couple of different levels home, so the $270,000 home that represents 25% quartile, where the 433% represents the 75%. Again, this considers the market value changes well from the previous year, but $270,000 home could be, could expect about a $39 increase, and then a $433,000 home could expect about a $66 increase. My favorite slide here, this is a comparison of the cost of city services on a $350,000 home utilizing 5,000 gallons of water. So this is a comparison of property tax paid, as well as the two utilities that the city of Shakopee, Shakopee provides, which is stormwater and sewer. The annual cost for Shakopee is the lowest of our peer comparison cities at $1,246. The other cities range from $1,509 to $2,394.
And as Mr. Reinhardt had noted earlier, Golden Valley has a smaller percentage this year, the only one of our comparable cities that does, but you can see that they are also the largest tax, taxers of the group, and when you put that in perspective, once again, Shakopee is at the lead.
Just one slide on the schedule for reference if, if needed, which is going to mention, property taxes were noticed or mailed by the Scott County in the middle of November, which brings us kind of to where we're at today. And then my final slide here is just, this is a public hearing, so public is welcome to come and speak on the budget of the, and the, or the proposed levy. There's no council action being requested tonight. We'll bring this back to city council on December 16th after taking public hearing, and you'll be able to vote on it then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Any questions of staff? Questions, staff? No? None? This is a public hearing. If you'd like to address this matter, please step up and love to hear your comments. Anybody like to discuss the city budget? Last opportunity. Very good. No action is needed by council, Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Lara. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. Okay, item number nine, recess for economic development authority meeting. Counselor Contreras.
Make a motion to recess to the EDA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I'd like to call the order, the December 2nd meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Please make note of the role. Item number two is our agenda. Any comments on the agenda? Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item is our consent business. Any questions about the EDA meeting minutes? Look for a motion, Mr. Lara.
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Yeah, a motion and a second from Mr. Delaney. Any discussion, 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 all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Any opposed? I think we got them all. General business, Mr. Kurski. Approval of the transfer guarantee and contract for private development from Deco Shakopee LLC to Lumen Holdings, Deco LLC.
Good evening, chair and board members. So this is a requirement of our agreement that if the property is sold, we have to transfer the original development agreement along with the guarantee. If you remember, the city holds the TIF note and receives the TIF value. That includes a guarantee from the property owner that if the taxes fall below the month it's due every year, the property owner has to make it up to us. So Austin Morris, who is the chairman and founder of Enclave, said an offer came along, the limited partners that are in this project wanted to transfer money to a different project, so they had a willing buyer, so they decided to sell. And I included in your packet some information about the buyer, and the buyer's representatives are here tonight.
Questions of staff? Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, question I had was, in the memo, it talks about an interfund loan with interest payments. Do we, can you just let us know where that's all at? Year-to-date type thing?
Yes, be happy to.
Okay, that's all I had.
Any other questions? What are the wishes of the body? Mr. Contreras.
I'll make, actually, let me see. Let me find the motion.
My recommendation.
The recommendation. Where is it? Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. There it is. Approve Resolution E 2025-005 approving the assignment and assumption of the contract for private development and transfer of redevelopment property from Deco Properties LLC to Lumen Holding Deco LLC.
Is there a second?
A second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, so my understanding is all we're doing here is we're taking an existing property that's currently operational under a TIF agreement and transferring ownership under the, all the same terms.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, next on your agenda is the EDA bill list. Is there any questions on the bill list?
No questions.
We'll call that unanimous consent and look for a motion to adjourn. We can use in, Mr. Lara?
Make a motion to adjourn to January 6th, 2026 at 7:00 PM.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
All right, we'll reconvene the city council, which takes us to item 12. Liaison administration, Mr. Delaney, you can go first this time.
Okay, so once it's not a coalition, we'll cease operations in 2026. There'll be a fighting, final meeting in, there'll be a final meeting in 27th February. We're going through all the emails and to get this, and the resolutions from the different members to get this, close the activity down. So you will see emails coming about that going, going forward. There was a Shakopee Public Utilities meeting yesterday. Let's see, nothing new there. Actually, I have something I wrote down here. Let's see, 1,300 customers with unknown pipe type, they're going to get letters, this is basically lead replacement for the pipes. Fire hydrants, you've seen the covers on the fire hydrants, those are in place, and we now have 41 electric AMI meter customers remaining to get installed. And let's see what else. Went to the Chief Tate's award ceremony, that was, I think everybody here was there, so that, and that's it.
Question on the lead pipe, maybe staff might know the answer if you don't, but if the lead pipes are found on the private property, there's funding available, I think it's federal funding to pay for that?
There is funding available, I'm not sure whether it's federal.
Okay, and if it's found in the service side of it, which is the utility, then do they get funding from the, I think it's federal dollars.
Yeah, that I'm not 100% certain if that is.
Anybody know the answer to that? I'm pretty sure it's federal dollars.
I'm not sure. Alex, or you?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's a Department of Health funding for the lead service line replacement, yeah.
Okay, federal. Yep, okay. I know there's some residents that were concerned about that, that if they find it, what's it going to cost me, right? It's, it's a federal program, they'll try to get rid of lead.
Exactly.
Okay?
That's it.
Mr. Whiting?
We all made it to Chief Tate's award-winning, award presentation, so that's about all I have for liaison reports.
Very good. Counselor Contreras?
Mine's short. So on the 19th, we attended the boardwalk ribbon cutting, and on the 25th, Chief Tate's award ceremony.
Very good.
Proud of his achievements.
Counselor Lara?
Exact same thing, on the 19th, the boardwalk ribbon cutting, and the 25th was Chief Tate's award ceremony.
And due to the holiday, it's pretty consistent across the board here, right? I also attended the boardwalk bar and grill ribbon cutting with other council members. What a fantastic space they created out there. It's, it's open, it's
Very unique.
It's got a really unique layout, unique menu.
Right on the track.
It's a nice place, so I would encourage you to visit it if you haven't for the first time and come to your own conclusions of what your preferences are. And the Chief Tate, Shakopee Police Chief Tate, award, was received an award at the Rotary, and the name of that award was
Doc Meralt.
Doc Meralt?
Doc Meralt Award.
Which is a pretty substantial award given by the Rotary to Chief Tate for his many years of service to the community. There's a high standard for that award by, that goes back quite a while in history through the Doc Meralt, and it's, it was, it was pleasing to see the Chief of Shakopee, Chief of Police, to receive that, very well-deserving.
Well deserved.
Does a great job with the community, and we look forward to that legacy carrying on within our department for, for the future to come. My report, that's all I have. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to, you know, we really haven't acknowledged it publicly yet, but Chief Tate will be retiring in February, the end of February this year, and will be going to work for the county in a, a position that will hopefully help steward their transition process with LETG and other things that they've been working on for some time. With that being said, we are currently accepting applications, so if you want to be a police chief, please, yes, Counselor Whiting, we will accept your application. But essentially, you know, we, we hope to have another chief identified prior to him walking out the door. So Jeff, thank you for all your years of service and everything that you've meant to this community. You stood on the shoulders of Dan Hughes before you, who adopted the concept of community-oriented policing, which is our call at this point. We are one of the leaders of that in the state, and it's exciting to think about the future, although recognizing also that Chief Tate will be leaving us, and big shoes to fill, but good luck in your, in your future endeavors, and, you know, obviously, you always have a home here. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. We've got two items under 12A news and announcements. We'll give one to each end. Mr. Lara?
Winter parking restrictions are now in effect and run through April 1st. No parking is allowed from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM on city streets. Certain, certain exceptions apply within the calendar zone. Please visit shakopee MN.gov/winterparking for more information.
Very good.
Okay, well, this is Holiday Fest 2025. Holiday Fest is Saturday, December 6th, 2025, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM in downtown Shakopee. Holiday Fest is a celebration to kick off the holiday season. There'll be a winter vendor marketplace, pictures with Santa, a tree lighting fireworks. Come join the holiday fun. More information can be found on Shakopee Chamber of Commerce website. This is always a great time, and I think most of us have, actually, all of us have been here every year, it's always a great time, get some stocking stuffers and
We're going to have 40-degree weather, I can tell you.
The fireworks aren't on, the tree, the tree lighting isn't.
And let's not forget the, let's not forget the traditional Shakopee floats that are always award winners. I don't even know what we're doing this year, though, I think we're kind of falling asleep at the wheel, so we'll allow somebody else to garner those awards, awards, but, you know, we, we have been very proficient in, in getting some awards.
City's pretty good at the Florida words.
Very family, family-oriented, please join us, we'll be down there having a good time, and Mr. Whiting, remind me, next meeting, if there's only two, it'll be the two inside.
Okay.
12B, city bill list. Any questions on the bill list?
No questions.
No, we don't save money if we don't pay them. I asked that question for many years, and we got to pay them, penalties cost more, so. Any other business from council? Any other business?
Nope.
Staff? Wishes of council?
Make a motion to adjourn to December 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Delaney, seconded by Ms. Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.